Good evening, everyone. Tonight's planning commission um meeting open session at six thirty nine P M. Roll call please.
Commissioner Tarafa Baxter.
Present.
Commissioner Abadi.
Present.
Vice chairperson Veronica Harvey.
Present.
Uh Commissioner Rivera is absent for the record and Chairperson Haverness is absent for the.
Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I'm sure. There there was there was an item on your agenda that E one uh that contemplated the swearing in of of your new commissioner at the end uh and I understand that there is desire to move that uh to the front end of the agenda, so I would recommend moving it to after public appearances uh and and that would uh give her the opportunity if she wished to participate in in the consent. Uh as I understand it, uh the preference of of the commission with respect to the reorganization is to defer that until all members are present to participate in that and so uh the item B one and two where it talks about uh appointing a chairperson and a vice chair chairperson would be taken up at a future future meeting. And then with respect to item C one, uh the minutes will be deferred to a future meeting.
Thank you.
And since that was the item on the consent, then then I would say uh that the swearing in could occur before the uh public hearing.
Okay. Um let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
Okay, item B one matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak at this time? Okay. Um at this point, we'll go ahead with the swearing in.
Just as a introduction, welcome. Um I I wanna make sure that everyone understands kind of the process now. So the rules have changed a little bit. Each commissioner is tied to a particular um council member. And so uh Ms. Stacy Mendoza selected uh Ms. Winkler and she'll be sworn in today. Uh the council put this out for applications, received several, they were reviewed by the council person, and it was listed on the city council agenda. So the council has taken action to e- accept it and at this point we'll be doing the swearing in so she can participate.
State your name, do solemnly swear or do solemnly affirm.
I, Ms. Winkler, solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and alliance.
That I will bear faith, truth, and alliance.
Truth. To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties of of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome Commissioner Winkler to the planning commission. It'll be fun working with you.
Thank you.
Um continuing on to item D, public hearing. D one subject, public hearing discussion action recommend approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero five for Kevin Williams for the installation of a sixteen foot two inch pre manufactured storage shed within a residential zone located at five four two Buffalo Grass Court A P N zero six four dash three seven four dash zero one one. I'd like to open the public hearing and um get the staff report on that.
And vice chairperson, before we proceed, I think the original intention, as as I indicated under the adjustments to the agenda, uh was for Ms. Winkler to be sworn in at the end. Uh I believe she was provided a copy of the agenda uh at the same time that you all were. Uh but in in talking to her in in advance of the meeting and the fact that we might move it to the be to the beginning uh 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 and I'll leave it to her discretion when it comes time for the vote. But in in the event that uh just in the event she chooses to abstain, it's it is it there shouldn't be any be anything uh taken from that except that uh uh she she was anticipating not not being sworn in till the end and now she's been sworn in. So it would depend on her comfort level at the point in time that comes. So I wanted to make sure you all were aware of that, so there's no uh uh speculation about why she why she abstains if if that's what she chooses to do.
Thank you very much.
I I opened the public hearing and we'll go uh continue with the staff report.
Good evening, vice.
Public hearing will be opened at six forty seven.
Good evening, vice chairman and commissioners. My name is Lorena Galindo. I'm in the community development technician and I will be presenting tonight's public hearing item. Item D dash one, C U P twenty-three dash zero five, Kevin Williams. This public hearing is for resident Kevin Williams. Mister William is proposing to install a sixteen foot two inch pre manufactured garage storage within his property located at five forty-two Buffalo Grass Court. A conditional use permit is required to allow the installation of an accessory structure that deviates from the allowable twelve foot maximum within a residential zone. The project is categorically exempt from s- from the SEQA under section one five three zero one. The public hearing was duly noticed in the Hotfield Tribune and Calyptical Chronicles on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And notices were mailed out to owners within three hundred feet of the project site. No concerns or obje- or objections were received. Staff recommends the approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero five for Kevin Williams to allow the installation of the sixteen foot two inch accessory structure with the agreed upon conditions of approval. Mister Williams is here to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Mister Williams.
Good evening.
Do you have anything to add to the staff report that was just given in regards to your project?
Uh no, I believe it covers everything.
Okay.
I have a question. In the background on the first page of the package that we received from the staff report, it indicates that the intended use of the sixteen foot two foot sixteen foot two foot, what is that? Eighteen feet or is it sixteen feet two in- two inches? Um.
Uh sixteen feet two inches.
Okay. But uh it's intended to you be used for auto storage?
Uh yes, so uh I I'm an automotive enthusiast. I like to work on old cars and stuff and I just I'm looking for a place to actually store uh my vehicles, tools, parts, stuff like that.
On on.
Uh my personal vehicles. Uh roughly four to six. I I have a few vehicles that I inherited when my father passed away. No, no, these are inheritance. I would like to keep them within my family, pass them down to my kids.
Talk to your neighbors.
Uh yes.
If they would be uh have a problem.
Uh so my my next door neighbor to the north, he has a a similar building that he put in, I believe is maybe a year or two ago. It's nearly the same height, slightly smaller footprint. Uh the other neighbor to the south, I've talked to him as well and he's he's actually thinking about putting a building in himself.
Okay, so is this in the Wildflower Development?
Uh yes, ma'am.
So you're right off of Ayton and Blazing Star Trail?
Yes, ma'am.
Probably a couple blocks off of that intersection?
Uh the second block.
Yeah, I know where you're at. Okay, so um then your uh your back is to the La Boucherie Road, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. So I need to know, thanks.
I have a question for staff. With this going in, this won't impede on the lot coverage maximum that they can do? Not even like not even close?
Not even close.
Okay.
Oh, here's a li- another question about um probably city manager, Mister Marita could answer it. Um you'll be working on these vehicles. Is there like a time where noise has to cease or is this structure soundproof that it won't carry? What do you think? Is there a time that uh not supposed to have any noise after a certain time?
I thi- okay, I think Mister Moore may be able to address this in more detail. I know that noise issues have come before this uh commission in the past. Uh we do not, I as I recall, what what the commission has been advised is that we do not have specific uh rules about noise. There is general nuisance laws, so that if your neighbor is uh doing things that are creating a nuisance, uh that's a situation where you could call police, for example, and there are provisions in the law that would that would be uh make uh creating a nuisance illegal. So you have the criminal side of it, which is contained in the penal code. There's a civil side of it where you could have a a nuisance uh that that could be redressed uh in a in a in a civil court. Aside, so there isn't anything specific in our zoning code or development standards, for example. As I recall, our general plan does have a noise element in which it it speaks to a a fifty decibel sound limit at the pr- at the property line. So we so we do have that sort of standard. As I as I looked at the packet, I don't I don't believe uh, well, I think the next step is probably going to be a building permit application. Uh this is the land use aspect of it, so the next, once he has the land use entitlement, he would, I would anticipate he's gonna come back with a building permit. And I think at that point, the staff is going to addr- address if they feel it's necessary uh sound attenuation and things like that. Uh so I don't, that's kind of a long winded answer, probably didn't directly address your question.
Information. I remember when we were dealing with uh like the barbecue place. That's just down cr- catty corner and from this way from City Hall. There was an issue about noise to the apartments across the street. That's why I brought it up and I thinking this is single family residence, is does that apply there too or is it only dealing with businesses or in this area of downtown?
The big difference with that type of business have live music events and that's one of the issues and we looked at that really closely, but um uh uh on on uh storage sheds like that this one, uh w- we do not. And and like uh Dennis uh mentioned, we have provisions uh under the law that we can apply if there's a noise uh complaint.
Right, but uh Mister Williams' point is that he's gonna work on these vehicles. So if I'm just wanting him to be aware that he there might be complaints if he's doing it at midnight or one or two in the morning, just reasonable. I'm I'm not being critical, I'm just pointing out a fact that maybe some people are light sleepers, even though your neighbors on each side are doing the same thing. Okay, so.
I also just from a legal standpoint, just like Dennis said, we have section twelve that just generically says don't be a nuisance to your neighbor, but you always have an option with conditional use permit to add those provisions um or clarify or say, you know, not to be um noisy. What are the the timeframes in our general plan?
Um the only ones that I recall are uh construction noise, which are from seven A M to um seven P M.
That was when they're built?
Yeah, correct. That that is correct.
I w- I will say i- in my my observation is that I I wouldn't anticipate that this sort of use would create a a neighborhood problem where we have had issues is where people in their home bega- begin to engage in uh a a ba- in essence, an auto repair shop. Right, so people start bringing cars to their home and they're working on them in their front driveway um a- and 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 doing so after hours. We have had complaints of that sort. Um I I do not recall having received complaints from this sort of configuration. But of course, there's a first time for everything, but it so if it does happen, I think we have the wherewithal uh to to address to address it uh as indicated by Mister Moore with the conditions in the C U P.
Oh.
That's correct, ma'am.
I just wanna confirm with staff, the setbacks on each side are three feet.
Oh, sorry. The setbacks are five feet, six inches.
To the rear?
Correct.
And then on the side?
Correct.
Isn't it three feet? Did it get lowered from five to three?
It it is three feet. He he's allowed to do it three feet. Um but he's proposing to have it at three feet. I mean, at five feet.
Okay. Okay, that's.
Yes.
Thanks.
And um you're planning to, are you planning to paint this the same color as your house or?
It should be like a similar color with color the houses right now.
And you're gonna be bringing in the vehicles from the from the front?
Yes, ma'am. I I have a double drive gate on that side of the house to to go through the side.
Because behind you is a is a street?
Uh no, because there's an empty lot behind, but my property sits roughly three to three and a half feet above the lot behind me.
Okay. Are you planning on cooling the shed or like?
Not really, not at this moment.
You see, you have a lot behind you, not facing, that's not uh against uh the Shree Road, the sidewalk?
No, 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 it it faces a vacant lot behind.
Do the commissioners have any more comments or questions? Anything for the applicant? Does anyone in the in the audience have any comments or questions regarding this project? Any additional? Okay, then I'd like to close the public hearing at six fifty-nine and does anyone have a motion?
Uh motion to approve the conditional use permit twenty-three oh five for Mister Kevin Williams for the installation.
Eye for Mister Williams for the installation. A two-inch pre-manufactured storage shed within a residential zone located five forty-two Blue Buffalo Grass Court.
Motion carries three zero with one abstain from Commissioner Winkler. Thank you Mister Williams and good luck with your project. Onto D two, public hearing for recommended approval of variance twenty-three dash zero two for Tim Gaddis. For the deviation of the City of Imperial's industrial zone property development standards. For a one-acre minimum lot area located at two eight zero South N Street. APN zero six four zero eight two zero four nine. I'd like to open the public hearing at seven oh one PM, uh staff report please.
Item D two, variance twenty-three dash zero two, Mister Tim Gaddis. Tim Gaddis is requesting a variance for the deviation of the City of Imperial's industrial zone. Property development standards for a one-acre minimum lot. Area located at two eighty South N Street. Staff reviewed of staff, sorry, let me start all over, staff review of Mister Gaddis' application for a lot line adjustment determined. That the approval of the proposed lot line adjustment will create a point three eight acre parcel. The city industrial zone property development standards requires a minimum parcel lot of a one-acre minimum. This project is categorically exempt from CEQA under section one five three zero one and one five three zero three. The public hearing was duly noticed in the Hopeville Tribune and Collegical Chronicles Chronicle on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And notices were mailed pro- property property owners within three hundred feet of the project site. Staff does not recommend the approval of variance twenty-three dash zero two for Tim Gaddis to allow the deviation. Of the industrial zone property development standards for a one-acre minimum lot area located at two eighty South N Street. The applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening Mister Gaddis, is there anything you can add to uh what staff has already mentioned about your project?
Um I guess it's been, not to be approved?
Yes.
Application's there, the property's been developed, finished, done. I had to, I don't know, did any of you get a chance to go by and look at it, that property? The property's been developed on this based on the point three acre uh site plan, which is consistent with the rest of the lots. To the south of this one and uh. Basically, we were not aware that there was a one acre m- minimum until after the project was completed. The variance is being processed while we were building the building.
Um it says that Mister Gaddis has constructed a seed warehouse on the proposed point three parcel. And intends to develop an incubator site on the larger two-point-two acre parcel. Did you expand on that?
Well, we purchased, we purchased that twelve acre parcel, this is the old Caltrans property on Barione, east going east out of town. And uh at the time we met with like Rob- Robert Uperano and a few other people, our goal was to develop that property. Along N Street, uh within about two hundred feet of Barione, with some buildings with like twenty-five hundred square foot rentals. Where small businesses come in, have a small office warehouse, and that was our idea for improving that property. This property here was the first building we started to to build, but we had a buyer, someone wanted to buy this one. Our intentions were to maintain ownership of the rest, so we entered into an escrow and this was built as an as-built. For the company, I mean, they're called Radical Seed here locally, but it's actually uh, I I'm not quite sure their exact business name. But they're known as Radical Seed and uh they have a seed, it'll be a seed warehouse for them to sell distribute seed out of. Agricultural lettuce, carrots, I I'm not sure exactly what kind, but it's all agricultural seed.
What about the incubator?
That's a future project, that's our next project.
What kind of incubator?
Well, we call an incubator where we would build a building which would have vacancies available for rent. And um the concept is to market this as, hey, here's a small office you can rent with a warehouse if you wanna start a business or. You know, uh develop a business, that's the idea. There's 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 a real need for that, that something like that is, they're not available very much in Imperial, Oral Central.
Here's a question. Six acre parcel, who developed those? Who who carved them out?
Were they in existence when you bought this?
Those lots were existing, yes.
They were already in existence?
Yes.
And there's uh buildings on it?
Yes, basically the same thing, small building warehouse with an office inside, similar to this one that we built.
Are you, are you located across from the a lot that uh lady came in for the trucking? Cause you were familiar, we had to hear about that, no?
No, if there was a lot with trucking went across the street, you would have heard about it, of me probably, but no.
No, you, it was a hearing like Matt last fall.
I'm across the street from the August Mountain Warehouse that got allowed to be put in on Barione.
Okay, this was she was gonna have overnight.
Okay, so how long you been, how long have you been in the process of dealing with the city? In order to and also building the seed warehouse?
Um I don't have it exactly in front of me, but I think this product's been closed about sixteen months.
So it's over a year?
Yes.
And they never told you there was a one acre limit?
No, the first site plan that we that went with the plans showed this point three eight parcel. With with indications that this was a future parcel that was being done. Uh with a variance with a lot line adjustment.
Of this size?
Of this size.
All on your own, or did you have any uh?
BJ Engineering.
Okay, aren't they, aren't they supposed to like look up what the um. What the requirements are, you know, zoning, et cetera, be familiar with that?
I don't know where that, who would call responsible for that, I mean, I feel that maybe the city should have let me know. When I said I was gonna build it on a point three acre parcel, my engineering for my grading, my engineering for my retentions. Everything was based on this point three eight acres, so the same city engineers, and I'm not, this doesn't reflect on city staff. This is this engineers that are brought in, I think, I I would call it a subcontractor. The the same engineers that helped calculate all this stuff based on the three eights acres are now comes back, oh no, it can't be three eights, it has to be one.
Oh, but all along, I every, uh you probably had to have a uh submit a retention basin. Grading, all that has to pass review from the city, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then then give you a go ahead and then you go and spend the money to get it done?
Yes.
And the structure's standing up right now, right? Okay, and if I had an inspector come in to look at it to make sure it met code, right?
Yes.
And it passed?
Yes.
Okay, so how did you learn that oops, you didn't dot the I with one acre?
When it came time, when when we were pushing to to complete the lot line adjustment. At the end of the process of the lot line adjustment.
At the.
I I don't.
I guess my question would be as far as timing, right, that the lot line adjustment then that that doesn't need to be completed prior to the actual. Building construct, like project construction or?
So it all depends, so uh in in this case, what happened is they submitted a building permit application, um grading as well. And that's they only stated that they were gonna build uh uh within the parcel, so when we looked at the parcel, it of course met. Uh all development standards, um what happened at, and then after, you know, certificate of occupancy and all that, then we received a. Lot on adjustment application, when we looked at that, we 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 told the developers that that's not, it's not meeting the development standard, so. In this case, it was kind of backwards, they usually are submitted at the same time or prior to do the development. So everything was approved based on the, I believe it was two acre lot, so it met all the requirements. And and uh we processed that, we we inspected it and and uh and then the lot line adjustment came for review.
Time of asking for a building permit, retention pond, uh uh. Altitude, you know, rating, to the time when then, and then the building's going along. To the time when asked for a lot line adjustment, how much time transpired, do you know?
The original lot line uh application was being, you know, it was months, months ago.
Yeah, yeah, but from the time that it was, you know, everything was approved to the time it was submitted, I I don't recall, I could give you that information later on.
My my argument there would be that if 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 this project was approved on the two acre parcel. Then the retention basin, the grading on the project should have been based on the two acre parcel. Cause it's all based on, you know, uh surface area, et cetera, et cetera, and it was all figured on the point three acre parcel.
That makes sense, that's the area you're gonna.
But on, we only account uh what's gonna be disturbed, where you're gonna have, everything else, we leave it aside. Uh because you're not building anything on top of that, so we don't, we don't. It's not part of the calculation, it's it's dirt, we leave it as is, uh imagine we do that for every development, it will be uh a tremendous cost.
Yeah, it would by just sitting there, so you're you're trying to be economic wise.
Correct.
Uh Mister Gaddis, did you uh inform the city when you asked for the building permit that you? Wanted to sell this section separately from the rest of the property, so you would need a lot line adjustment? That was your intention?
I mean, I may have verbally said that, the only thing I know that was in was in writing was the indication. That this is the size of the parcel that the project will be on, based on the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, so that was in your present, your application, that you were going to ask for a lot line adjustment?
Yes.
Steph, was it in there?
Aitken, the the application. Ilia, your project manager, and and there was not.
It's on the, it's on the, it's on the site plan itself.
Site plan that says we'll be requesting a lot line adjustment?
I I don't know the exact verbiage, but.
Pretty simple, those words.
We we indicated that it was gonna be that size of a lot.
But you didn't, I mean, you may have verbalized it or, you know, put a line there, but you never came forward with an application. Paying the fees or all of that, where staff could have told you at that time that you wouldn't, you know, it goes against code.
I would have to go back to BJ Engineering because they were handling it originally and um to see that exact date is when that took place. When Harvey passed away, he was the one that owned BJ Engineering, that's when we went over, we went ourselves over there, okay, what needs to be done to get this wrapped up?
Had to carry us finish.
Yeah, so we we kinda picked it up midstream, so to speak, my office did.
My concern is that, yes, your intention was to build on this corner of the lot. And that's how the city accepted your presentation. And uh in order for you to sell this to a third party, you know, versus just keeping it yourself, alright? Uh you do need to separate the property because they need to either finance or they wanna own it. That just makes sense, but the issue I see here, the rub is when was the. When was it clear to the city that you were, you needed to adjust the line in your application before uh. You started on this course of building, grading, retention pond that covered that corner?
I would ask you to look at it this way, if I would have done the lot line adjustment prior to any construction, would we have declined? Making this size of a lot for any reason, when it's consistent with every other lot all the way down to the end of of N Street?
Okay, and I'm gonna counter that argument with what has happened in the past, there's been some like what we call gerrymandering. Things that were not consistent, and it seems to me that the city, it has attempted to uh create conformity. Alright, so what's in the past, I guess gets under grandfather clause, but what's going forward is. The intent that things are more consistent, more in conformance. So is that the case, you know, the one acre lot, while these other lots are less than, did those exist? Prior to buying your lot of two point six acres, Mister Gaddis?
The smaller lots to the south of me, yes, they did exist.
And like, so they did exist?
Yes.
And they probably have been there for some time before the city decided to have a one acre minimum? Do you know the answer to that question?
Uh we went back a couple years, um back uh on into our records and they've been there for quite some time, correct?
Or the city iced?
Uh before, um actually before, we had actually a building, a a planning department within the city, at least. You know, that far back, two thousand seven, two thousand eight.
Times history doesn't work. Things were done in the past, doesn't mean they're always right.
I think you need to talk to BJ Engineering, unfortunately Harvey's not here any longer.
Neither is Jose, he passed away also, there there's no one at BJ that's gonna be able to help us with this.
Yeah, uh you would think that they, their paperwork, if you express that you intended to carve this out. That they would be aware of the procedures in the town that where your property is located to um. Tell you you have to submit and get approval for a lot line adjustment for less than the acres as required. Yeah, it's like you're up with it.
Basically, I mean, if if it's not gonna be approved, then I'll have to go back and build my case as to. You know, why we did all of this work based on this three eight, point three eight acre footprint. And then this happens. I mean, it's been a big investment for us, it's been sitting there, it's been in escrow for months, we can't close escrow because of this and. There does need to be some changes because when we talk about smaller companies come in, this company has no use for one acre. So what you're gonna end up with right there is still an alkali flat, instead of us taking and creating lots and parcels. Where everything's uh landscaped, you know, kept nice, and you don't have a lot of empty just dirt out there. Uh that just, you know, gathers trash.
Curious question, they're wanting to buy, are they interested in leasing like you're setting up the incubator sites on the remaining property?
Those will only be lease.
Right, but are these buyers int- uh interested in a long-term lease?
The pre- the.
Versus buy.
People?
Yeah.
No, they're just interested in purchasing just this property.
Okay, so if they don't buy it, they're gonna go somewhere else?
Um well, hopefully that's all they'll do, I mean, they've been waiting for us for several months to get this closed, so. No, they're not interested in leasing.
On your investment, not just as quick, it's just over time?
No, we we approached them with a lease when they came this originally, they did not own a lease of property, we made a decision to sell that. One corner over there because it's on the very edge of our property.
I recall the s- the subdivision map act, I I believe you're required to formally subdivide a property. Not only for purposes of sale, but also for lease, and so and there are some exceptions to that for agricultural purposes. But I think that 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 provision in the map act would would require that this property be divided. Uh even if it was just for lease and uh so if if I can take a minute and just. Uh attempt to give some context to this, because I think commissioner body. Uh you 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 raise uh excellent points and I want I wanna be clear about where the. Also be clear about where the staff is coming from with respect to the recommendation. As you can see, the recommendation is to deny, and I think that that's largely driven by the fact. That if you look at our ordinance and state law, there are very strict requirements if you're going to grant a variance. And so it's. If you're going to grant a variance, and so it's supposed to be the exception as opposed to the rule. Uh and and so that's kind of where we find ourselves. Uh and I would suspect we might be in the same situation, even if we were to kind of be able to put some dates. On when the building permit was submitted, when the lot line adjustment was submitted and all of that. And what was on those plans and so forth and so on, I think we would still find ourselves pretty much in this situation. And that is how, how does uh the developer accomplish uh wh- what they originally set out? To do, um i- i- for those of you who have been on the commission for a while, this area of town. Frankly is a problem, and it and it deserves some uh attention with respect to our zoning. If you, if you note, this is uh uh page one of the staff report, I two rail-served industrial. If you then look at to page two, uh which is is an overhead of this area. Uh you won't see any rail, uh we we all know there's rail there. But it is si- significantly removed from this property. So query whether uh why this is I two as opposed to something else. Uh significantly, an I one zone uh does have a si- a smaller minimum uh lot size. And so if this property was zoned I one, um there that we wouldn't be having uh this discussion. Um if you look at page two, you'll see little white rectangles. And I think that photographically depicts some of the information that's contained on page fifteen. That the applicant submitted in terms of the size of the lots in the area. If you look at the little white rectangles, oh you'll see what is in, what is in his area. Uh and so, um I I uh a- as I indicated earlier, we've s- we've had other issues. Um with the I two designation. Typically, what you would expect to see with an I two designation is the heaviest industrial zone that a city could have. Yet, if if you, if you go down P Street a little bit to the south. You'll see property on the west side of P Street that is I two, and across the street is resi- single family residential. And 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 the reason it's I two is that particularly as you head farther south, the train tracks are a little bit closer. So, once upon a time in Imperial, that made sense to somebody to call it rail-served industrial. Uh as houses developed to the east, um I think that becomes less, less the case. But you still have the railroad tracks there, and as you look at page two, you can see the 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 uh. The size of the lots all around uh this, this developers', this developers' project. And so, on the one hand, you have staff recommending a denial. And I think if you, if you looked at the technical legal aspects of what you're supposed to find to grant a variance. I think that recommendation is, has sound basis in in the law. So you have that on the one hand, on the other hand, if you look at this map. I I could see, I I I wouldn't quarrel too much with somebody that says. A one acre minimum parcel in that area makes no sense, in in view of what is already existing around it. Uh and and so, is a variance the best way to get for, in this case, from point A to point B? I think what you've heard from staff is, it's probably not. At, by the same token, I think there there's some things the city needs to be doing. In order to, in in order to uh address this situation. Uh because, like I said, uh to my untrained eye, I two makes no sense uh in this area. And cause, and 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 this is a little bit off the subject, but I'm gonna touch on it, when you look at the permitted uses. In an I two zone, um there are uses that you have to get a conditional use permit for. That are outright permitted in a C zone. So the, the the kind of the. Pro- the issues associated with our zoning code, um um are. Well, i- i- it 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 deserves, it deserves attention, it just, it it, but it's a sign- it's a significant. Cost associated with revamping, all of that, and so as a consequence of all of those things. Things get piecemealed, and they end up before you, and 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 there are difficult decisions. In that, you have staff saying, this is what the law is, and I can, I have no quarrel with that aspect. Oh, um but by the same token, I would say that um dealing with an issue. On what amounts to a case by case basis, in this instance, a variance may be the best way to proceed. Until we are, we position ourselves to bring some order to our I one and I two zones. I hope I didn't lose anybody with that, but I I I I think for, particularly for those of you. Who have been present on the commission for a bit, and have seen some of the things that uh come before us. And I and I think prompts, uh I, you know, I I I think the uh Commissioner Body has has been very polite. In in the manner in which she's raised the issues, uh I if if she were, if she wished to be more direct about it. She might ask, what, well, city, what are you doing?
Cause I think we had a case sometime back, similar to this, that that was the rub, that the uh variance. Could not be granted under the rules because of the zoning, and the discussion was, well, the city. Needs to bring and go through the process to change the zone. I think we had another case like this.
I'd like to follow up on Mister Marida with with two things, one, directly to the east of us, two lots just sold last week. Directly to the east, and they're smaller than than, I think the com- combination of both those lots is smaller than this point three eight. And it's right there, the second thing is, as soon as this fiasco is resolved, we're gonna apply for a zone change. Because, because of the fact that it's rail-served, I I ha- I occupy the old Caltrans office there on Barioni. We've had a shop sitting, building behind our, you know, we run a construction company, so we have a metal building, keep all our materials and everything in. When we applied for that permit, we were told we had to get a conditional use permit, because we're not rail-served. I think uh Jeff Lyons told me the rails were taken out of there in the early sixties, there there are no rails on that twelve acres that we own there. Eleven or twelve acres, I forget what it is. There's no reason to have a, a requirement for rail, I mean, if if you said, no, 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 it has to be a rail-served business, well, who's gonna bring in the rails? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And so, we're we're gonna apply, because probably, how many parcels we have laid out, like six? Like six or seven parcels when we're done with the whole development, and if we're gonna have to go for every building. And apply for a conditional use permit with a five thousand dollar application fee. It behooves us to come to you guys and say, hey, let's, what Dennis has brought up here, let's be reasonable, get rid of this zoning. So we can develop this into something and clean this area up.
I require, uh you said, big cost or whatever?
Well, it it depends on, I mean, i- if we, if if we piecemeal it. It it's kinda like if you do everything at once, right, there'll be some economies of scale associated with it. As a practical matter, the the approach has been, uh when when you have folks like this developer, they'll come and they'll say. We wanna rezone our our piece, and so, and so, the effect of that would be, okay, now, now. To the extent the properties surrounding them are still I two, now you're gonna have. I one or something else with I two around it, and so, that's, that's really why. Um uh I mean, it's always, i- it it's helpful to the city. When when de- developers come in and wanna do something and and basically foot the bill to accomplish it. Uh when you, when you, when you're talking about as many different owners here, uh as at the end of the day. The only way to get a consistent plan in place is if the city, if the city takes the bull by the horns a- and does it. So, um uh you know, Mister Gaddis has indicated what his intent is. Uh and 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 like I said, our our. Until we get to a place where we, where we bring some consistency to not only our I one and I two, but our C zones. Because like I said, it makes no sense, and I think it also comes up in, when you're called upon. I uh to make similar use determinations. As you recall, our zoning code is set up in a way where, okay, you're in a C one zone, and 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 so you go to our code. And it's very specific, you could do these things in a C one zone, or you can do these things in a C one zone, but you have to have a conditional use permit. Uh well, a- and if it's not a particular use that you're proposing. Is not specifically identified in the code, then you're called upon to say, well, which zone is your use? Most like in terms of a specific use, I think this came up with, for those of you who were on here. With the uh funeral home on Ayton Road, right, that particular z- zone is, it's like, okay, it's. And and that's when it first hit home with me, that it makes no sense, it it was in an industrial zone. And the industrial zone, at the end of the day, was more restrictive than a commercial zone, right? An industrial zone is where you expect to see manufacturing, um battery plants, uh and and. Manufacturing sorts of uses, and our zoning code is more restrictive in our industrial zones than in a commercial zone. And so, it makes it difficult for you, if if a developer comes and says, well, this is the use. And it kinda looks like a commercial zone, but I'm in an industrial zone, and the industrial zone says, either I gotta have a C U P. Or I can't do it at all. And so, we we run into, and so staff has to wrestle with those kinds of issues all the time. But uh uh getting back to this, I'm sorry to digress, but uh getting back to this, when you have. A variance and and very clear rules in the laws, the sort of fines you have to make, it makes it difficult for staff. They feel compelled, because of what the law is, to make the recommendation they do. But frankly, that's why I'm I'm speaking up now, because I I I frankly see some unfairness in the application. Uh so that's not the fault staff with respect to, they're reading the code and they're saying, you know, the full code's pretty clear. Uh um and how it should be applied in this case, but when when I look at the map. And I see the size of the lots, and I see that this particular lot is larger than most of the things around it, particularly. When you, if you look, if if the area to the west on this overhead shot is to the west. Those lots closer to the railroad tracks uh are smaller than than his, which in my mind is kind of. Doesn't make sense, but um in any case, so um. I I I I sympathize with the dilemma that 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 you find yourself. Um and it's, it's not an issue that's gonna get, I I would like to say. This is the last time something like this is gonna come before you, I suspect it's not. Um and and so, uh I I I thi- I think to deal with it on a case by case basis. Or if you have the luxury of some time, what I hear Mister Gaddis says, that there are some parcels. That that they're gonna consider requesting a zone change, and so. And so that will come before you, because you're involved in zone change uh requests, and so I think that, that. If that happens, then you can maybe start to see some sense being made of this area from a zoning standpoint.
When when I'm, when I'm talking about the future of like the zone change, if you take between N and P. And from Barioni all the way to the back to what we call the alkali patch there, it's four parcels, we own all four parcels. We wanna change the zoning on all four parcels, so it's not gonna, I'm gonna be changing the zoning on a parcel next to somebody else that isn't getting their change. Everything there that's undeveloped, we would wanna ask for a zone change on that before we, probably before.
What's the total acreage on those four parcels, more or less?
About eleven or twelve. I mean, our goal was to put either, you know, a a medical facility or some sort of offices on Barioni. Uh which is why I was contesting the auto dismantling right across the street. But with this zone, i- i- that again, it's gonna, a C U P, a C U P, a C U P. Whereas, I think what what Dennis is saying is that, nobody's gonna come in there and ask for, to build a rail-served business on there. So, we have to get something worked out.
Uh to um Dennis, I know this is, you know. Probably not anywhere in the near future, but has staff discussed when, you know, they might consider. Going through this whole revamp of the zoning, and maybe like in the next five years or sooner, or?
It's something that we have to do, it'll be like in a week and a half. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're wanting to do this, but I don't wanna go through. I mean, I'm probably gonna do the, have to do the conditional use permit on my property, where I have my office, because my building's sitting on the ground. And I need to get it up, and I don't see us getting a zone change. I, I don't like the fairness of that, but if I have to do it, then I have to do it. But when it comes to all these other projects, I just don't wanna have to do it for each one, and another issue, and this is, Lorena dealt with this with me. On the conditional use permit, they're asking, well, what's the use of the building? Well, I'm building a building that we're gonna put out for lease to a new business, I don't know what the use is gonna be. I I I don't know, you know, so what do I put on the conditional use permit? It's gonna be retail, is it gonna be some sort of manufacturing, what, you know, I don't know. Makes it difficult to process a conditional use permit when it is in a specific use for that building, another reason for the, to get the zone change. God, I hope it doesn't take five years.
You're planning to to do this building, or proposing to do this building before having um committed interest? From business owners?
Yes, yeah, what we've found in the, in the past is that, um usually when you start building, you start getting the interest. You know, we, when we started building this one, immediately, we had made the deal with Radseed, Pat C, a realtor, approached us several times afterwards. And I told her, I said, as soon as we get this done, Pat, we're gonna move into doing the incubators, and you know, she, oh, I can get people, I can get people, I can get people. I I think there's a real need for it. See how it works.
Questions I did. Asked to do, um there are findings that you up with, and. One of the findings was a smaller parcel would present a possibility to be detrimental to public's health, safety, or welfare. Um how, what leads to those findings, is it a fire code issue, or?
Uh has to do a little bit with fire issues, and also, the the I two is intended to have some space in between. Um so lot acreage and uh, cause you have manufacturing, it's it's mainly uh noise. So you wanna be, you know, away from from all sorts of things, you wanna have enough space.
What's the spacing gonna, a smaller lot and the larger two point two two acre?
I believe there's a forty five foot setback right now on the north side of the building to the property line. And then our minimum setback is what, five or ten feet from the back of a building, so at a minimum, it's gonna be fifty five feet separation, at a minimum.
Uh when you haven't start building, started building yet, though, right, the larger one?
No.
I have a question for staff on s- number six, which granting the variance will be incompatible with the city of Imperial's general plans. Conservation element, um can you just elaborate on that a little bit? Number six.
I'm sorry, I was like, I give it this time, uh my staff report to the new commissioner. Uh one of the things that we looked at is the uh energy conservation aspect of that, so i- and we looked at the same thing in in for I two. Um uh it's not that it, we don't require, uh for example, like insulation type. Um in in this case, it's incompatible with the surrounding areas, which we looked at the I one. Which we require thicker insulation and all of that, so it's not compatible with with that.
You're saying the building is not compatible with I one?
No, with conservation, the general plan.
Probably insulated, if if it's gonna be selling.
It's it's refrigerated, it's very, very well insulated.
Yeah, yeah.
Better than most homes.
Yeah, it has to be. Cause otherwise those seeds will lose their germ real quick and eat.
That's why when you said insulation, I didn't understand why it wouldn't have any kind of zoning requirement.
For the larger citywide effort, when you're talking about potential to rezone and and all that. That would require, I'm assuming, like a change of your obdation, uh de- updating your general plan. What does that effort look like if it was something that the city would pursue in terms of timeline and cost?
Of funding, uh it's always an issue. Um the timeline that we're looking at, we're doing a general plan. Um a land use uh amendment, uh which we wanna include some of these uses. If it triggers sequa, then uh it's probably gonna be uh coming to you in the next two years. Uh but this amendment uh that's not gonna require uh to have so many findings. It will be coming with you within, I believe, the next six months.
The extent you're talking about s- s- something that would deal with the whole area of town, for example. I you're 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 looking uh at several months and and well into six figures. Because chances are that work would be done by a consultant, would not be done in-house. So uh uh obvious and and that's discussions I've had with Mr. Mora. It seems to me if there's a way we can fashion where we can do smaller pieces. One thing that I've been I I thought about in terms of this would be to deal with a text amendment to our zone change. So then we're not looking at individual parcels and how we're gonna zone them. Uh but that we address what this our code says about what's permitted in an I two zone. What the development standards are for an I two zone. And what we have to be mindful about in that context and that uh that we don't. We don't end up with something that looks like the tax code. In that we uh try to address a problem here and then there's an unintended consequence over here. So then we go over here and try to fix that and then we end up with. So I think that's why I di- in a in a perfect world, it's all done at once so that you you that you avoid those sorts of potential for inconsistencies. Um the reality for us, gi- given budget limitations and other things, uh is is that. We we might have to just be diligent enough to not let that happen in terms of creating problems, unintended problems.
Anyone in the audience that has any comments or questions regarding this um project outside of our applicant here? Any other comments from commission? Questions? I appreciate the context behind this, Dennis, cause it helped a lot. It helped clarify a lot. With that being said, do I have a motion for um variance twenty-three dash zero two? We need to close, okay, sorry, I apologize. We will close public uh the public hearing at seven forty-four for item D two.
Move that uh we approve. The uh variance twenty-three dash O two for ten gas for the deviation. Of the City of Imperials industrial zone property development standards. Four hundred one acres minimum lot located at two eighty South North Street, N Street. APN zero six four zero eight two.
Do I have a second? One second? So the motion dies at this point and um. Are there any other motions at this time?
Oh, just um the way that our policy and and our codes work, if we have a a a motion. Um and it fails, we have no motion that succeeds. The project can be deemed a denial. There's also an, sorry, an option to continue. But um once it's deemed denied, the option to go to the city council um takes place. So unless there's any other motion, it would be deemed denied or continued if if the council wants it that way or of your your group.
We continue, then they'll come back, we'll discuss more and then attempt to make another decision.
Yeah, so I I my recommendation would be if there's no action tonight, um that you we deem it denied, don't continue it. And then they have the option to.
Do I have the ability to ask one more question?
Oh, yeah, you can ask more questions and you certainly, if anyone wants to make a motion at this time, that would be fine as well.
Dennis, remind me, you mentioned it earlier. Um if this was I one, it would meet the minimum acreage requirement?
Anyone on the commission have a motion?
Well, I'm gonna comment. If the motion is to move it to the next meeting. What can Mr. Gaddis say to the board, the commission to change those the the other members minds? Other than what's been said? You know, is this just kicking the can down the road instead of uh allowing Mr. Gaddis to go straight to the city council? By calling up some of the members and uh making his case, you know, to build up the vote. Before the meeting, I've done that, gone to I O D. Where I called the board members and made my case. So then when we got to the meeting, even though there was opposition, they were informed with you. Versus just hearing hearing it for the first time at the meeting, that's a suggestion. Because I think that it seems to me, just seems to me, that in another two weeks, we'll be at the same place and you've lost another two weeks. While maybe in three weeks, you could be on the agenda of the board or if you don't make the cutoff for next week's meeting.
I agree. I don't I don't think he should come back. I think he he should go straight to council.
Yeah, and and um advocate your position. You know, you're a you're a taxpayer here that's bringing in business. And I it seems like the city council's agenda is to develop the City of Imperial. And you're bringing in good things, you know, not just uh manufacturing. But you're bringing in businesses who are gonna add to the tax base.
If it had ever been indicated to me that it was not going to pass that other than stating to all of them.
Yeah.
Before this.
Yeah, I think you have to go and do some, uh what do they call lobbying? All you need are three. And you are probably familiar with some of those members as far as knowing them, cause you're in the business community.
Well, I I I wasn't aware that I needed to have all these facts for you tonight. Or copies of paperwork that was submitted to to build my case.
Wanna, if you wanna know the record, sorry. We can hear you, but if the council goes back to review the tape, I wanna make sure they can hear everything.
If I would have known, I would have needed all the layout and plan. I I would have done it. I truly really thought that this was not an issue. Simply based on, I mean, just to me, it's just a common sense thing. I'm a common sense guy. And it doesn't make sense to me that we're gonna fight for this I two zoning requirements. We all know it's not gonna work unless you wanna just leave that dirt there. And I saw it to somebody else. And we can wait a thousand years until somebody puts a railway in there.
First of all, you've already invested the building standing, okay, right?
And a significant purchase on the property, which we, which at the time I came and met with city council people with our plan. And uh I I think maybe even Dennis at the time was privy to some of those conversations, hey, I wanna buy this. What do you guys think about doing this? What do you think about incubator sites? What do you think about a medical facility?
A positive response from the members at that time, was it during a city council meeting?
No, individually.
Individually.
Yeah, no, there was no reason to take it to city council.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted the input from the city here. You're gonna be behind me in in doing this project, so.
The city can, the city council, how I understand, Mr. Gaddis, can even override our decision.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, it can override our decision. We are merely.
A recommendation.
A recommendation. Commission, alright? So I think if you already had the uh. Positive support when you brought the concept to members on an individual basis. I think there's a need to refresh their memory that you made this investment, you have a buyer. You're moving on, you own the the properties, you're br- increasing the tax basis for us, you're beautifying the area, alright? And yeah, make your argument of history. The lots too mu- uh east or south or wherever are equal to, if not less, in size than what I'm wanting to carve out. You know, sometimes we get stuck on, that's what I was, I was stuck on just the structure as far as the rules. But then we have to deal with reality.
Appreciate that.
Alright, and you can do it. I didn't. I was surprised. And I went up against some big guys who were against what I was saying, alright?
Just just to be clear, there are some items that you deal with where indeed you make a a recommendation and the council takes final action. With with in the case of a variance, your decision becomes final unless it's appealed. So so that's the difference. If you were to make a decision tonight, whatever it was, and nobody appealed it. Then it would be a final decision and wouldn't go to the city council. It's only in with respect to a variance condition use permit, it's only in the case of appeal that the city council gets involved.
Oh, is that what Mr. Gaddis would be doing? Because it uh because the lack of a second, the a motion died. And there's not a subsequent motion and therefore effectively the application for variance has died, has denied?
It it will, exactly correct. So we'll put the language in there that they're exactly following the process of what happened in terms of motions. Make it clear that it's deemed denied based on, you know, failure to pass um.
As a re- as a result, then therefore Mr. Gaddis has the avenue, the right to appeal. The decision of the commission to the council. So he has an avenue.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a cost to the appeal and a lengthier process than norm? I don't wanna say normal, but the pro- what's the process time?
Um eh, there's additional costs we have to.
Passed on to the applicant.
Eh we have a a deposit and then we'll take it out of that. Um I believe it's around a little over three hundred dollars.
What's the ETA for him to get on the?
Get a newspaper notice, ten days at least, um and notifications, so uh. More likely, I I'm sure staff will do everything to expedite it, but.
That the close will be on of next month.
Your closes would be October eleventh?
Correct.
Okay, it's in a month.
I'm just, first thing, just one comment before we close out the motion. I would just encourage my fellow commissioners to um weigh heavily the comments and information that Mr. Marita provided to us today.
Before I close it, are there any additional motions before I close the hearing? Close the item.
Motion two.
Two. Uh second? Do I have a second for the motion?
I have a second.
Roll call. Motion carries to approve three zero with one abstain from Commissioner Winkler.
Congratulations. Thank you, tax taxpayer. Thank you.
Okay, moving on uh to. We have E one that we are going to table. Until the next scheduled planning commission for the reorganization of the planning commission. Just confirming that with everyone, so now we are down to reports uh. Let's start. We'll start with staff reports. Am I going backwards? I'm going backwards, aren't I? I always said it when staff reports. No. Commissioners reports, it's cause I I'm I need coffee. Uh commissioners reports.
It's been a long summer.
It's nice to be back.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Thank you. Nothing to report on. Um just welcome to our newest commissioner.
Just wanna say I'm excited to be on the commission and I look forward to helping the City of Imperial.
And uh same here as far as welcoming uh Commissioner Winkler to the team. There's never a dull moment, so you'll enjoy it. Yes. Staff reports?
No- nothing for me. And I would just say you do have the prerogative to switch things on the agenda, so.
I was getting gutsy on the first one, so. Nothing. And okay, so we will adjourn tonight's meeting until the next regular scheduled meeting. Tentatively scheduled for September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M, adjourning at seven fifty-eight P M. Thank you.